Good evening and welcome to the December 21st, 2021 meeting, Winter Solstice Meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. Okay, pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16th, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until April 1st, 2022. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted both in person and via remote for public participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Our conference ID is 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So everyone, welcome again. Just as a reminder, mute your mic and shut off your camera unless you're participating. Let me start with a roll call. We know that Corey Metters is out, so we'll start with our Vice Chair, Shereen Davis.
Present.
Dean DeCastro.
Present.
And Jeffrey Dykens.
Present.
And the Chair is present, Peter Kukolos. All right, just a quick overview of what we're going to be doing. We first have a set of minutes from December 14th. I'll then take public announcement and agenda item request. Then we'll get into new business. We'll be having an update on a coronavirus COVID up, coronavirus update. Then we'll get into public comments on the following business agenda. And our first business agenda item is an update on the town of Chatham's Emergency Management Program. And I'll take public comments during that presentation. Then we have a mass clean water trust financing agreement, and then we consider opting into the municipal opioid litigation. Then consider a date of our 2022 annual town meetings. Nice getting a lot of inputs on that. And then finally, an annual business license renewal on four areas. So let's start with the minutes of December 14th. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, any changes or comments? Dean?
I just went on page five, under item C, paragraph two, in the second line, right at the end after the word "live." I'd like to add the phrase professional slash training. So to bring live professionals training theater, we already do have some live theater in Chatham with the Charm of Chatham Drama Guild.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, not seeing any. Let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Dean?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Public announcements and agenda item requests. I have one, and we have some from the board. This is just a quick update from our quarter, second quarter and third quarter with Cape Light Compact. I just want to let everyone know how much money the town is getting here. And also as maybe an incentive to get an assessment, because all our bills are going to be going up higher because of the gas prices. But during, take both of those quarters together, we had over 676 residents and businesses that participated. That's individuals or combination thereof. And we received a total of $665,160 and $860 in incentive dollars for the people that participated. And we had 136, excuse me, 196 people that did participate, and we did have 10 businesses, which is good to see also. So just as a reminder, it's out there, and I say it's free. You're paying for it on your bill anyway. Though an assessment, if you haven't had one in a couple of years, is worthwhile doing. Okay, I know Shereen has one. Shereen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to let the folks know that last night, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees met, and we had a working session, and the discussion was on housing initiatives and next steps. And we had discussions around the town-owned parcels, potential zoning amendments, and policy decisions. It was a really formative discussion, and I urge people that are interested in the affordable housing and the efforts of the trustees and the board to go online and view the session. You can on demand at Channel 18 and also through the ChathamMA.gov website. And those discussions are going to be continuing throughout the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. Anyone else on the board? Okay, I know Dr. Duncanson has one. I see his hand up also. Well, good, Dr. Bob.
Good evening. Thank you, Peter. I just wanted to make the board and the community aware that the Main Street Stormwater Project in the vicinity of the Elders Garage will be starting shortly. It was originally the first item on the contractor's agenda is to do a couple of test pits to locate exactly where the gas main is, the engineers that located it. But then when it was marked out by the utility companies, they're not in the same place. So that's one of the first things that needs to be done is to definitively find out where that gas main is because it may impact our design in terms of where some of the substructures for the underground stormwater leaching are located. So that was originally scheduled to start tomorrow. I was just informed earlier this afternoon that that, in fact, is going to take place on Thursday because of the anticipated rainy weather tomorrow. It should not be a big impediment to anybody on Main Street. We may be down to one lane alternating traffic. But these test pits should be relatively shallow and completed fairly quickly. So I just wanted to update the board as well as the public. And in the larger project, we'll probably be starting around the second week in January. Once we have the test pit date on the gas main, we'll have a better sense of whether or not any further revisions need to be made. We've already met with the engineers and looked at a couple of revisions to the plan, depending on where the gas main finally is located. So to expedite that process, but we're still on track for beginning in early January and completing that project in about a month. So barring any major winter weather, we should be in good shape. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Do I have anyone else? Staff, public? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to our new business, and we'll bring back Dr. Duncanson for a coronavirus update.
Thank you again. So for tonight's coronavirus update, as of yesterday afternoon, we had 488 cases of confirmed cases of coronavirus since the beginning of the pandemic in roughly March of 2020. Hard to believe. We've been going through this now for almost two years. But let me share my screen here quickly, and you can see the breakdown of cases by month. So you should see that here. Whoops, for some reason, it's... Okay, that's strange.
Yeah.
You're only getting part of the graph. Let me try that again. Okay, that looks a little bit better. So there's the monthly breakdown of cases since the beginning of the pandemic. As I said, we've had 488 cases through yesterday afternoon. We've had a total of 37 cases so far this December compared to 57 cases in December of 2020. And at the current pace, we are on track to either meet or slightly exceed confirmed cases this year compared to last year. And you know, let's face it, last year at this time, we were just going into a winter surge. Hopefully, we will not see the kind of caseloads that we saw in January last year, repeated in January of 2022 due to vaccinations and, you know, people heeding the advice to get tested and whatnot. But we have seen, we're averaging about three to four cases a day right now. So that is not necessarily good news. In terms of the percent positivity, which I'm showing right now, that did peak two weeks ago. It's trending downward again now, but it did peak even higher than the peak that we saw back in August and September of this year. And about the same as the peak that we saw in the April timeframe of this year, but not as high as what we saw last December and January. So that's good news. And it is trending downward. Keep in mind, this data only comes out once a week. So we don't know whether that downward trend is going to continue or not. And then just finally, the average daily incident rate, that is continuing an upward trend. We have surpassed the peak that we saw in that back in the August timeframe. And we're just slightly ahead of where we were in April of this year. But again, not as high as we experienced last December, January, February. So hopefully, with the new word that's coming out and the increased testing and the increased vaccinations, we won't get up to as high as we were in, you know, the January peak. And then the final thing that I wanted to just quickly touch base on, the governor held a press conference earlier today and made several announcements. He's activating 500 members of the National Guard to help out the healthcare community that have been severely stressed because of the increase in COVID numbers and hospitalizations, as well as staffing shortages. The mask requirements have changed slightly. They've issued a new mask advisory. As of this morning, the Department of Public Health is now recommending that everyone vaccinated or unvaccinated wear a mask in indoor settings that is not your own home. So if you're out in the stores or the movie theater or the theater, wherever you are, you should be wearing a mask. And that's consistent with, you know, kind of the recommendations that our local Board of Health has had in place since the summer, recommending masks for everybody in indoor settings. So those things came out today in the governor's press release. We've posted that information on the website on Channel 18, and it's been distributed through the town's email system, including the Chamber of Commerce and schools. So with that, that is enough for my update for today.
Thank you. I see Dean's hands up.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. Bob, can you please just explain the difference between the positivity rate and the daily incident rate? What do they mean?
Yeah, positivity rate is based on the number of positive tests versus the number of tests overall. So you know, if you get 100 tests in a day and there's five of those tests that are positive, that gives you the positivity rate of 5%. So it's based on number of positive tests versus the number of tests overall. And then the average daily incident rate is based on population. So it's a number based on 100,000 populations. So obviously, for communities like Chatham and whatnot, it's extrapolated based on our population. But that's the difference. One is based on the actual number of tests that are done, and only the PCR tests, not antigen tests for the percent positivity. And then for the average daily incident rate, it's based on population. So if you look at the graphs and you overlay them, they almost match up because you're really saying the same thing, but based on two different data sets, if you will.
And the data is a week old, right, from what you said?
Yeah, this data comes out every Thursday, and it's for the two weeks prior to the preceding Tuesday. So when it came out last Thursday on the 13th, I think it was, or the 16th, it's actually based on data as of the prior Tuesday for the previous two weeks. So there's always a lag, if you will.
Right, so it wouldn't necessarily reflect the current explosion in Omicron variant communication?
No, this data would have been right about the beginning or just shortly thereafter the beginning of the latest outbreak. That's why we expect those numbers to probably go up over the next couple of weeks. Yeah.
But it also never reflects the severity. It's just really frequency that's been...
It's frequency, right. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff's hands up.
Thank you, Peter and Dr. Bob. Just a question, I guess, on testing. With the outbreak of Omicron, I think there's more, there'll be more demand for testing. And Governor, I mean, Governor Baker has sent out tests to individual towns, four towns on the Cape. And we weren't one of them, number one. Number two, President Biden says he's going to send out 500 million tests. So I don't know if you had any other insight on that. And I just wanted folks to know that maybe do we post where folks can get tests on our website? I heard, and I don't know this for a fact, but I heard that CBS was, there were fewer tests at CBS, et cetera. And I do want to say that we had an experience at Cape Cod Hospital that was phenomenal. So people want to go get a PCR test, that outdoor tent there at the Cape in the parking lot is phenomenal. It's really slick. They do a great job. So I wanted to plug that, but I'm interested in testing. Because I think there's going to be a much increased demand.
Yeah, we do have links on our website to testing availability, and you're absolutely right. There has been a rush on tests recently because of, you know, the rise in Omicron, the holiday season, the recommendations of CDC and the State Department of Public Health to get tested. I've heard anecdotally that, you know, a lot of the local pharmacies have run out of at-home test kits. They no longer have them on the shelf, and there's a seven-day, seven-to-10-day waiting period to get them online. You can order them from places like CVS, Walmart, et cetera, but it's taking seven to 10 days. So unfortunately, if you haven't gotten one now, and you wanted it to test yourself before you go, you know, to a holiday gathering or something, the choices are few and far between. Most of the counties' testing sites are now fully booked. I think Cape Cod Healthcare, Outer Cape Health Services, and some others would be the next place to try to see if they have availability. CVS and Walgreens still had some availability for PCR test appointments, but you know, that can change in five minutes. So yeah, right now, it's difficult. We were not, as I indicated last week, and as you indicated, we were not one of the 102 communities in the Commonwealth to receive at-home test kits from that first batch from the governor. We are still waiting word from the state about our ability to purchase test kits at a discounted rate, which the state did for the 2.1 million that they announced last week. We had hoped that that information would have been out the end of last week or this week, but it looks like now we're not going to hear about that till after the first of the year. And we don't have any information yet on cost or how long it will take to get them and those kinds of things. So yeah, unfortunately, everybody's looking for tests right now, and it does take a little bit of work to try to locate one.
Thanks.
Dean?
Thank you, Peter. I had a follow-up question, given the exchange between Jeff and Bob just now. So Bob, someone goes and gets a PCR test at Cape Cod Hospital, whatever, wherever. Does the, do the test results indicate whether it's Omicron or Delta, or is it just you're positive?
No, you would just get a positive or negative indication. The state is sending a percentage of all the tests that are positive out to be genotyped, but it's a relatively small percentage of the total number of tests that are done in any given day. And you know, it's enough for surveillance purposes, but you would not necessarily be told whether you have Delta, Omicron, or the original strain.
Thanks very much.
Anyone else? I don't see anything. Just, Dr. Bob, just another anecdote. I spent the whole week looking for tests, and you had to be there when they showed up, or they were off the, they were, CBS was sold out within 15 minutes. Every once in a while, they'll tell you when the next shipment will come in, but right now, they're saying no. But in any case, we had at least one, and we were able, I had a blue line, so I felt pretty good. But to get a hold of, okay, thank you. Thanks very much. That was good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Peter, it looks like you have somebody else's hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, there, I see Elaine. I'm sorry. Okay, Elaine.
Thank you. One of the concerns with not being able to get tested is that if we see a falloff in the number of cases over the next few weeks, it may not be valid data, correct? Because it may be that people simply weren't able to get tested during their contagious period.
Yes, that would be true. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Anyone else before I move on? Okay, I don't see anyone else. Thank you, Dr. Bob. All right. Excuse me. Next, we have public comments on our business agenda. And I'll just remind everyone again, our next business agenda, the first one up is our Emergency Management Program. I'll take public comments during that time. Any other public comments on anything else on our agenda? Okay, don't see that. Let's move on. As I mentioned, we have an update on have an update on our emergency program. We have, our speakers tonight are going to be, is our emergency management individual, John Kendrad Tovich, better known formally as KZ. I got it close. I know, I came close, John. And the other is Justin Tavano, who will be with us. I should note and say Italian. But in any case, this was a citizen's request, and it was Elaine Gibbs. And before we get started, let me have Elaine let you know what her concerns were. Elaine?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I most recently made this agenda request after the last four-day power outage, asking that the community center remain open overnight if either all or significant parts of Chatham lost power during the winter months, and that residents are made aware of that plan now. I recognize there are different levels of warnings, warming stations and shelters that have different requirements and criteria, some of which will take longer to implement. What I'm asking for now is to simply keep the community center open for any resident with no power, no light, no communication, whose homes are dark and too cold to remain in. The community center, which now has a generator in place, is handicapped accessible, which I understand is the only requirement for a personal care center. It's heated and is already open six days a week from eight to nine and half days on Sunday with one person at the desk. I'm asking that during storms, with the potential for power outages, that the lights remain on and the doors remain unlocked so residents and families knowing they can escape the cold and dark during dangerous overnight hours. Most importantly, residents should know ahead of time that this option will be available. Once power is lost and they have no heat, light, internet, landline, or cell service, it is too late to communicate with us, and then we're on our own. I hope this policy will be implemented immediately and communicated through all available social media outlets and by mail to residents, providing emergency phone numbers if necessary. And moving forward, I would ask that just as we have COVID and water quality updates, that the emergency manager who's here with us tonight, KZ, be invited to give progress updates on emergency preparedness protocols in place for all natural and/or man-made disasters. I think we've learned that we must be, rely on ourselves as a community when outages may be local rather than having to rely on the county or state. So I look forward to their presentation, and thank you for allowing public comment.
Thank you, Elaine. Okay, KZ, and our Deputy Fire Chief, Justin. We'll start with KZ, I guess, right?
Well, good evening, everybody. And unfortunately, I can't share from my computer, but I thank you. And Mrs. Gibbs, thanks for those comments as well, and I'll make sure that I address all of those. And don't worry, you know, Peter, you're not the only one who can't pronounce Kendrad Tovich, so that's okay. That's why it's going to be so much easier.
I hate to admit that I'm married to a woman of Polish descent.
That's quite all right. Now, if you can't spell it, that'd be offending to me if you can't spell it, honestly.
Yeah, right.
But anyways, so I asked that Dallas and Mark will run the slideshow just as a result of me not being able to work it. And I will take questions and answers at the end. However, if you want to do that and leave it open, so. So, so my presentation tonight is basically that. It's talking about the emergency management. I'm gonna break down the different types of shelters, just as Mrs. Gibbs got into, because there's different, there's different types of shelters and different requirements that the state and federal require behind it. And there's other ones that don't require that much as well. And my intent is to give you a snapshot, the snapshot as of today. This is today. So keeping all that in mind, this is a snapshot as of today. So, thank you. So, next slide, please. So just, just informational. And on the line, I know that Michael Anderson, our deputy, and as well as that deputy fire chief is on. And I think that Stuart Smith also was going to join us. And I know Jill is on. Chief Dave is unable due to medical reasons, just, and so he's not able to join us tonight. But everybody else is. The one thing that is pertinent to know about this slide is the fact that the phone number up on the top. Why do I list the Emergency Operations Center? And it's on our website as well, is the fact that a lot of times that the dispatchers get overwhelmed. Emergency Operations Center, the ELC, is basically, it comes directly to me. I'm the one that's going to take the burden off of them when it comes to phone calls, whatever type of phone calls that it may be, and allow the public safety officials basically to do their job and not get bogged down. So, moving on. So, thank you. So, what this slide is, this is basically a slide that, and keep this in mind, this is referenced from Massachusetts Emergency Management. This is right from their website. And what it does is it breaks down the four different types of care sites and shelters. And the one that we really gonna focus on is really the personal care site. Because what's unique about the personal care site is the requirements and the state and the federal requirements associated with it. The only requirement that we, as a town, need to be concerned about is Americans Disability Act. If we meet that standard, then we can have a personal care site, personal care site, excuse me. Couple of years back, what we did was, we had Mrs. Rachel Fleck from Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, MEMA. And if I throw it in acronym, please, I will try not to talk in acronyms. I'll make sure that I, I bring it out, you know, long terms. But anyways, from MEMA, Massachusetts Emergency Management, she came down and did a facilities check of all the types of facilities that we had, and indicated if we were to do a personal care site, which one would be best. And that was basically, as indicated, she looked at our community center and said that that, in fact, would rate as a personal care site just because of the ADA requirements associated with that. So again, so, next slide, please. All right, this, this basically, all it does is draws down on that bigger slide that was previous. This goes more into detail. The thing that's really, that stands out in references is the two things that a personal care site, PCS, does not include, and that's overnight accommodations or dormitory services. Those are the two things that are associated with it. But it provides special dietary needs, access functional needs for services, electricity, warming, charging stations, cooling stations, whatever it may be, and determine whether a local overnight shelter is in fact needed. Next slide, please. Again, the same thing. And what I did was I just basically took the bigger aspect of that first slide that I showed earlier, and I broke down your capabilities, your functions, and your activation conditions associated with that. Next slide, please. Excuse me. This gets a little more into detail. This is the next step up. This is what's, we refer to it as LIOS, LOIS, which is basically Local Initiated Overnight Shelter. These are the shelter situations where the personal care site did not, was not able to provide. These are the, this is the next level up. Dormitory services in a single community, community and full dietary. That's basically the key to the situation for a local initiated overnight shelter. Next, please. And again, functionality, services required, same as the PCS, but there's additional things associated with it. The things that are associated that are different are the things that are in bold. And like most sheltering, most shelters are considered short-term. And they try to consider shelters in the 48-hour concept of basically, if we lose power, how does it work from 48 hours? Where do you go from there? And, and I wanna, one of the things that you keep in mind about sheltering, sheltering is just sheltering in and of itself. It's not designed to be extremely comfortable. You're not checking into CBI or anything like that when you talk about sheltering. Sheltering is just that. It's, it's basically not primitive, but it's just the necessities associated with it. So anyways, that's what your local initiated overnight sheltering operations. According to the state of Massachusetts and federal law, that's what it has. Next, please. So, and this is the next level. And actually, this is our regional shelter. So this is the next level, which is local initiated regional shelters. Provides the same thing. Communities basically establish mutual agreements and mutual understandings with most local and regional shelters. As we see, it happen to be school systems, and it happen to be schools. Why do, why is that? Because they basically meet majority of the needs. They meet the large open airspace, they meet the kitchen facilities, they meet the locker rooms where you need the, 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 basically, the facilities if you needed a large restroom, those sort of things. So full dietary, dietary and dormitory. So that is why you see a lot of the regional shelters are basically that. They are the schools. Next, please. And again, associated with those, these are basically the services, the requirements. And it's, most of them are activated through a local, local agreements and for expanded shelter capabilities. All right, next slide, please. This breaks down to six Barnstable County regional shelters that we have that are accessible to us. Needless to say, as I listed, number one and number two would be, if, if needed, a regional shelter would be the ones that would be utilized by the community of Chatham. Needless to say, others can be utilized as well. Nothing says it isn't. Then Nantucket has their own, and the Vineyard has their own as well. But those are the six that Barnstable County concentrates on for their regional shelters. Next, please. All right, so our sheltering types and our options. Basically, as our PCS, as we looked at our personal care site, our personal care site, as it speaks, as of today, as I indicated earlier, happens to be our community center, which was utilized during the last storm. And ours or operations for our community center was basically that. The intent was if, if anything was needed afterwards, transportation would be either individuals' transportation or transportation could be provided by, by the town. And at the time, we looked at ways of potentially, if, if transportation was needed, whether it was police, whether it was fire, or even if they possibly existed, we could have used the bus from Council on Agent. So that was it with the, with the personal care site. One of the things that we discussed, and it has been under discussion for quite some time, and, and Justin and I have worked on this, is local initiated overnight shelters. And that could be, if, if really is looking at some of our local hotels, could we establish a memorandum of understanding or a contract if really we were looking at it? What, there's advantages to that, pros and cons to most of those. But if, you know, a local overnight shelter was to be considered. And then, of course, what we do have available, as I indicated, number one is available. And then number three is. And these are the things, as indicated, we have right now. So the regional sheltering system for Harwich and Norset is in, is basically in place. So, next slide, please. So, considerations. When you start talking to PCS and you start talking even more than that, is, you know, assigned, and they're assigned the regular business hours. That's the way that, excuse me, the PCS was assigned. And it's assigned that we work it during the regular business hours, which was, as indicated earlier, where we have it Monday through Saturday and then a half day on Sunday for regular business hours. And then availability is limited due to a lot of things, as when you start looking at staffing of it and who's going to do it. One of the considerations we've always have, and which is right at our fingertips, is our CERT, Community Emergency Response Team. Roughly, our CERT team now is comprised of 70 people. When I say 70 people, that doesn't mean all 70 are active. We have about 40 of those people within the CERT team that are active. They're motivated, they're trained, they're outstanding volunteers. One of the things is it's non-contractual and they're volunteers. So we have to always keep that into consideration. So as volunteers, 2:00 in the afternoon comes in. If they have to leave because they gotta go feed the dog, they're gonna leave because they're volunteers. So, it, so just, that's something that we always have to keep in mind. They're also, as a result of some of their training, now they're being assigned to our regional shelters. Because one of the things Barnstable County has recognized as a fact is that the CERT teams are very, very powerful, and especially ours. Ours happens to be the gold standard for the box CERT, which is Brewster, Orleans, Chatham, and Harwich. The regional type shelter happens to be the gold standard for, for the county. And, you know, utilization for them as well for the, for the regional shelter in Harwich, and also even looked at now for, for Orleans and Eastham. So that, that's what has to be kept in mind. And also, we are always, always looking for additional local volunteers that are needed and can do some manning and take care of certain aspects of when it comes down to the personal care site staffing. So that gives you a nutshell, that's, that's the snapshot as of today. Next slide, please. So, sheltering operations types and services. This just gives you an overview of all three of the ones that I discussed earlier and, you know, and the staffing associated with it. And, and the options and considerations to be given is if, if we were to look at the second aspect of that, which is the local initiated overnight shelter, you know, the things that we would need to research. And those are the memorandum, MOU stands for memorandum of understanding, which is an agreement, contract with local hotels. And then look into the possibility of, again, is it the staff for the, for the local initiated? Is that the town staff? Is that the staff that we contract out if that was to be done? And of volunteers? So all three of those just come into play. Only consideration, that's all those are listed for. Those are the type of things that would be, need to be considered. Next slide, please. All right, so as indicated, where are we today? And these are some of the things that we discussed that wanted to be discussed. And as a personal care site, it's been talked about the generator for the community center. Yes, there is a generator, and it is a, it's basically the large portable, which is a, which powers the, powers majority of the, the community center. The only thing it does not power is if it was summertime, it's not the air conditioning. However, it powers everything else. It is in place, there is a foundation that Gary Gills Glazer put in there, which was a T-base. One of the reasons for not putting a permanent foundation in there is when we were researching, when we received the budgeting for the generator, for a permanent generator there, talking with a couple of the contractors, it was not, it was not prudent to put a foundation in there because the possibility was very large that that foundation would need to be changed if a permanent generator was to be placed in there. So it would have been good money chasing, bad money, and then having to basically, it was just being fiscal responsible. And, but the T-bases in there, the foundation's there. The other thing associated with that is Stuart put a lot of money into fixing that trailer that basically has pulled on it. And having it sit on the ground is some of the damage that was caused. So, budgeted, there is budget for it. There's a scope of work that's been completed. Already started looking at some opportunities, who can do it, what's it going to cost. However, we're still waiting on a load test that was completed. We're just waiting on the results that'll further define the size of the generator that is needed for the facilities that will power it 100%, which will basically, which will be everything, it'll power it. So we're somewhere in the vicinity of basically 180 to 190, excuse me, 170, 190 kilowatts to run it. Again, you know, where are we today to staffing? That's what we're looking at for staff. And then training requirements. The advantage is some of our, some of our staff has been trained on, you know, when it comes down to personal care site sheltering type of training. Barnstable County is taking a large initiative currently because other towns are facing the same challenge with training for their people. Going down to number two. Again, regional shelters, I just highlighted, instead of listing all six again, I just highlighted the two that are predominant for us, for the town of Chatham, which ones would be utilized. And then again, number three is local initiated overnight shelter, which is another, one of the categories defined by the state. One of the things is if we were to do that, we'd have, we would probably look at a contract with a local vendor. So that, that's to address that as a summarization where we are today. Next slide, please. All right, so one of the other things is to discuss a couple other things associated with what we've been doing with the world of emergency management. So next, please. And I want to emphasize, a lot of the partnerships, we've grown some partnerships. Not that we had bad partnerships. We've had outstanding partnerships. But one of the things is, is what we've noticed in the past few years, when it came to tornadoes, we've seen it all. We've seen pandemic, we've seen tornadoes, we've seen earthquakes, we've seen winter storms, we've seen it all. So the world of emergency management has basically taken a front seat in a lot of areas with a lot of different people, a lot of people at the state level, at the county level, at the federal level. So what we've done is we've re-enhanced, and we've built and strengthened our partnerships. FEMA Region One, constantly in contact with them at the federal level. And now, you know, we're even in contact with Fish Wildlife out on Morris Island, some of the challenges and some of the things that they face. But there's a constant dialogue with them to make sure that we are partnering with them in the things that they need and the things that we need associated with that. The United States Coast Guard. We're not only looking at the Coast Guard and working with the Coast Guard right here locally at the station, but we're looking at the base, and we're working with the base. Where's the base? Otis, in the sector, and the sector happens to be out of Woods Hole. Why? They bring a bigger, they bring a bigger menu when it comes to assets and capabilities and things that we can do. Why the base? Well, let's look at it this way. One of the things that's associated with the base is they happen to be a staging area for all of Eversource and a lot of national grid. They are large when it comes to that. But they're also large in areas that they have for other facilities that are available to, that can always be utilized. They happen to have food, what do you call it? Pantries there. There's a lot of opportunities that we've talked and we've kind of partnered that we can take advantage of. The other one, we look at the state level, and we start looking at the National Guard, the Air Guard, again, associated with Base Cape Cod. They've been looking to us, they've been talking to me a lot lately in reference to a lot of things that they're looking at and how we've done it and the success we've had with it and what we've looked at. Barnstable County, Barnstable County, Plymouth, Nantucket, Dukes County, we talk about that. And the Emergency Management Agency at Barnstable, we're very engaged with them. We're engaged with them weekly. We're talking to them weekly because of a lot of programs that they have and a lot of things that we're working with and where we're advancing, as well as the Sheriff's Department. They've helped us out immensely during COVID when it came to PPE. Those are the folks that were basically dropping things on our doorstep left and right when it came to a lot of things associated with that. At the local level, we've always had a great partnership with Broadreach, and it just keeps to get strengthened even more. The schools, Mass Maritime, I'll go a little bit more into that in detail on my next slide. And in the town's emergency management, we just recently did, we did our tabletop exercise in August when we started looking at sheltering in different levels. We were just asked recently, last month, by Orleans and Eastham, if we could do the same thing for them, and they look at sort of the same situations that we look at and where they are and the same, and everything else associated with it. Because it was, and that was basically run by Barnstable County, and I associated with that. And one of our Mass Maritime former interns helped out along with that to facilitate that. So, so those are some of the things there. We have developed, I go down to the last one, and I know I'm talking a lot on our strength and our partnerships, but this is the one that I would tell you that this is our big one where we've really expanded when it comes to Eversource. So much so that they designate a liaison to us. And, and it proved valuable during not only outages where they're in contact with us constantly, and we're prioritizing, providing them what our priorities are, where they need to be, but at the same time, we've allowed them for staging, you know, vehicles here and whatnot. So that one's helped out a lot. So, so associated with that. So next, please. So, as I indicated roughly on our last slide, and this is a continuation, some of our partnerships and future workforce. I like to, I like this, what we've done with Mass Maritime, because we've, we've, Mass Maritime has reached out to us and asked if we would help to develop them along with and asked if we would help to develop them along with the future of our workforce, meaning the young adults and how to develop them, help them, introduce them to a lot of the things that we look at aspect at the municipality level and get them involved. And we've also done that, we've tagged team with the Monomoy High School as well, especially with the police and the fire. More so really with the fire. But with Mass Maritime, we have been able to take advantage of when it comes to their intern program, when they have their sea term. A lot of their engineers and their transportation go to sea, but their other majors don't go to sea. So they're always looking for internships. And we've been able to take full advantage of that and some of the things associated with that. And we happen to have one that's coming online beginning of January and February. A young lady that's going to be working for us and, you know, working alongside with me and doing some things and giving her some exposure. One of the other big areas that we've utilized with them as a result of this is recently, we've, through the program, Emergency Management Program, we purchased a UAS, a drone for aerial. So it's good to have ground, we, so basically we have eyes on the ground. Now we have eyes in the air and eventually hopefully we'll, we do have eyes on the water, but maybe at some point we get eyes underwater. But at this point, what we've been able to do is they've been able to document our critical infrastructure throughout town, which is a big program that they just recently done. And they, and why is that important? Look at our critical infrastructure and the tier two associated with it, where hazardous waste facilities and everything with hazardous waste. When we have an emergency, it's good to know where our critical infrastructure and everything is from a standpoint and everybody's got a common operating picture. So they've documented that and they've gone around and we've done that. We've, and as talked about, we've had five interns to date, five of them. And all of them have been very successful in their future careers. One of them we're still working with who helps us and helps me out a lot, and that's Ms. Alexa Griffin. She's been invaluable to me in so many ways. So go from there. I talked about Monomoy, Monomoy Senior Op Co-op and their training. And they've, and Justin can probably talk more about that. But they've done a lot with the fire department because a lot of them are looking at the EMT, the world of being an EMT at paramedic associated with that. And their ride alongs, their trainings, and so it works out well. So we still remain to be that big champion, that point of contact for these young adults. As, as, you know, I like to say is we have a, we have input into our future workforce. So it's good to see what our future workforce is going to look like associated with that. Next slide, please. All right. And and I always go back to our cert, one of the, and I talked about how valuable our cert is. I talked earlier about 70 person team and we basically about 40 of them are always active. And we knew from the very beginning when we established it back in in 2019 that we could not keep a cert going by one town only. So fire chiefs got involved and basically said, hey, listen, and along with Barnstable County said, listen, why don't we do it from a regional standpoint by putting four towns together? Because everybody had needs, but no one could carry it. And we've been lucky enough, by the grace of God, to have a member of our community right here in Chatham, Mr. David Miller, who I swear is an absolute saint, is basically our volunteer and our coordinator for our cert program and gets them involved in so many ways. And has carried so much of the load for so many of the things that we've done, for our volunteerism, for our training aspect. And, you know, good, good absolute person, I'm my right hand man for a lot of things associated with so, so associated with that. Just I outlined a couple of things that he, that they've done in the past and, you know, there could be more, but I don't want to take up the whole slide. So those are some of the things that they've done. They've received grants, we've looked at grants for them. The grants are specific for PPE type of things finalized for when I take PPE, personal protective equipment, because they need to be just as safe to get out there as a lot of others. So we never want to put them in unsafe situations. So next slide, please. So I talked about this and this is the part of the show that I turn it over to Mr. Justin. And Justin can talk about our local preparedness and some of the things that he's been doing in his collaboration with the others. So Justin, take it away, please.
All right. Thanks, KZ, and good evening, everybody. Justin Tavano, I'm the deputy fire chief here in town. So yeah, KZ talked about a lot of the the outside of the town partnerships we had, which are, which are fantastic. I'm just going to highlight some of the, some of the stuff we're doing right within the town here. We do a lot of collaboration with the other agencies, the other departments and agencies in town. One of the, one of the really, really important groups that we have going is affectionately known as CHUG. It's the Chatham Emergency Working Group, and that has representatives from the Fire Department, the Police Department, Council on Aging, Housing Authority, and the VNA, who the town contracts with for nursing services. That group meets monthly for a number of years now. And it's really, it's a brainstorming group and an information sharing group. And one of the biggest things that comes out of that group is is new programs for vulnerable populations. They help identify vulnerable, vulnerable groups within our community and get them the services and the assistance that they need. So one of the, one of the programs that came out of that is the Special Assistance Program, which is coordinated by the Police Department. It could be anything from from identifying somebody who's mobility impaired to somebody's on, who's on home oxygen, somebody who has a tendency to wander, somebody who's in mental health crisis. Any type of of special assistance that any of our citizens might, might require. And that that program can be, you can register that for that program. It's a free program coordinated by the police. You can just, you can call over there and get registered for that program. And it's fantastic, especially in these times of emergencies with weather events. We have that list and we can go right down the list and it allows us to follow up with each one of those individuals to make sure that they're okay. Make sure that their their vents are cleared of snow during a, during a snowstorm, so carbon monoxide doesn't back up in the house. Make sure that they have power, food. Make sure that their phone's working, anything that they might need to make sure to get ahead of the, to get ahead of the problem so that they're not scrambling when the, in the, in the height of the emergency. The reassurance program, another program which is coordinated by the police. And again, you know, these are programs that that we all work together on. The reassurance program can also be, you can register for free through the Police Department. Another great program, this program, phone calls initiated by the citizen to the Police Department. And it's just a, it's a, it's a, it's a daily well-being check. You call in and just let them know that you're okay. If you forget to call in, or you can't call in because you're incapacitated for some reason, the police officers come over and check on you, make sure you're okay. And if they can't get in, then they call the Fire Department for some help getting into the house. Most often, people on these lists, on these, that are involved with these programs, we recommend that they have a Fire Department lockbox on their house. It's a good recommendation to have for everybody in the community, but especially the people that might need a little extra assistance, who live alone. The way the lockbox works, the, the cost for the lockbox is $61. That just pays for the, for the physical box. You can call the Fire Department, all we require is a key to your home and we come out and install the box and put your key in the box. Fire Department's the only person that has the special key to get into that box. So in the event that somebody might be, might, might have fallen overnight or might be too sick to answer the door, rather than having to break our way in, it just gives us quick and easy access to to get to you or to check the house if, in the event that maybe you forgot to call in. That way we can just go through the house real quick, make sure nobody's home. If somebody is and they need to help, we can get them the help they need. Another program, a new program that was offered this year is our, it's a house number program. Some of you have probably seen some of them around town, our big, nice reflective red street signs. Our Captain Ryan Clark, who's our, now acting as our public education coordinator for the department, started this program in collaboration with the Council on Aging. There's two types of signs that you can purchase, which is just at cost for the material, material for the signs. One is $12 and that, and that just goes, it gets installed right on your, on your wooden mailbox post. And the other one is $16, which comes with a green landscape post. And and Ryan and another member of our department will come out and install that for you. And then another program is our, our safe and senior safe programs. These are largely grant funded through the Commonwealth Department of Fire Services. The safe program is, it's primarily one of our, our, our public education coordinator, Ryan. He goes around to the schools and provides public safety education to our youth. Generally, our youth and our elderly are viewed as our most vulnerable demographics. And then the state, a number of years ago, started the senior safe program, which provided some grant funding to do the same thing, to do some public outreach and public safety education for our senior population. We're proud to, that we just started a new position within the department that year to separate the two. And that's being coordinated by firefighter Rachel McGrath, and she does a great job with that. What you don't see on the slide here when it comes to storm preparedness, which I know is a kind of big reason for the discussion tonight, something that kind of was initiated on the fly and during the October storm. We developed a shared live document spreadsheet that is, will be utilized by the Fire Department, the Police Department and the DPW. It can be monitored just with the click of a button by different people in town, town officials that that need access to it. And it allows us to 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 log and track in real time incidents that we're responding to, whether it's a, a tree down in the road that's blocking access to a road that we might not be able to get an ambulance to, a tree into the wires that's causing the wires to arc, power outages. Because we sometimes don't know who the residents are going to make these calls to about these issues. Some calls go into the DPW, some calls come into the Fire Department, some go into the Police Department. And when, when all the agencies really get overwhelmed in the height of the storm, sometimes sharing that information can become difficult. So by having our, each of our agency's dispatchers have access to this. And if we were to open the Emergency Operations Center during the storm, liaison from the agency would, would staff that, that EOC and would have access to that document. And they'd be able to track in real time where the, where the incidents are occurring, what's happening there, whether or not the utility company that needs to be notified has been notified. And the other thing in the aftermath of the last storm, where it really came in handy was being able to go back and sort the incidents by, by type of incident and by the agency that needed to be notified. So when we sat with our community liaison from Eversource, we were able to really quickly just group all the Eversource calls together and say, these are our, all our open calls that Eversource needs to deal with. They could cross reference it with the calls that, that they received on that and and get and and look at an overview of a map and say, okay, yeah, this is a really big trouble area. And this might be one of the reasons that the whole town is still without power. This could be a major, major effect on the grid. So it really, really assisted all of our departments in being able to kind of coordinate with, with the utility companies to get things restored as quickly as we could. Next slide, please, Mark. All right. So moving on to communications and outreach. Our smart 911 system, that's the reverse 911 system that we're using. It was previously referred to as SWIFT 911. SWIFT 911 was absorbed by a new company called Rave Alert. The good thing is, is that any previous subscribers to SWIFT 911, we were able to automatically roll into the new system, into the new database. For anybody that's not currently registered as a user or wasn't registered under the old system, that can be done, and I'm sorry, I meant to edit this slide. It can be done through the Fire Department website. But also just by going to the town's homepage, you'll see a big link with a red background on how to register there. Anybody that's having any issues registering, please just call me at the Fire Department. I'll make sure that, that we get you added to the database. Obviously, we know there's many, many of our residents in town that might not have computers, might not have internet access, not a big deal. They can just call the Fire Department and we can get them squared away. The, the benefit of the reverse 911 system, so long as people register, it's only a system that's going to work if people opt into it. And it allows us to do some proactive outreach leading up to an event. So if we know a big storm's coming, and it's not just for storms, it's for, for any type of emergency, water main breaks, storms coming, large fires that might be impacting a large area, power outages, you name it. We can put out a message and any information that we have, if we, if we know that we have plans to open a personal care site on the, on the front end of a storm, we can put that information out prior to the emergency so people aren't scrambling for information. In addition to that, any information we have can be, can and will be put on our social media. Both, you know, the Fire Department, the Police Department, the town Facebook page, all the different websites. Emails go out to, to town employees notifying them of, of critical information, channel 18 and print media. When all else fails with, with these things, because, you know, our hope is to do enough proactive outreach leading up to the event to get information that they need. But the fact of the matter is, is sometimes things hit us quick, they hit us hard and we don't have time and we have to be a little bit more reactionary. And at that point, people might have lost power, they might not have their devices charged. They might not have access to, to, to electronics to get the information. In the event that occurs, we do, going back to KZ's partnerships, we have a strong, strong emergency management division that's countywide. And the, I have a few acronyms in a row there, so I'll explain those. That's the Barnstable County Multi-Agency Coordination Center Public Information Officer. Quick message directly to their PIO. And when they put out their, their public service announcements about shelter, regional shelters being opened, they can add local information as well. So if we open a personal care site, we would let them know, we would let the MAC know and they would, they would push that out with their messages as well. The county is working towards purchasing their own radio stations, but that is not taking place yet. In the meantime, almost, pretty much, the, the, the message I got from the county was basically any radio station that will come in clear on Cape Cod, they will push those messages out through. And lastly, you know, despite COVID, please wear your mask when you do this, but there's nothing that can beat, won't you be my neighbor? Check on your family, check on your friends, check on your neighbors. It's, it is probably the most important thing that can happen, especially with some of our, our elderly populations, is that somebody goes and knocks on the door and makes sure they're okay during storms. We, we put this information out every winter and it, and it, it can't be, it can't be understated. It's, it's, we've had cases in the past where, you know, we've, we've been able to make a difference in somebody's life because somebody went and just checked on their neighbor and found out that they were in critical need. Whether it's, you know, a, a health emergency or, you know, they were, they had no heat for days and, and they just, they wouldn't have found help otherwise. Next slide, please. And then just moving on, lastly, just to some individual preparedness measures that you can take. We always try to tell people to plan for at least a 48 hour period. So in advance of a storm, not as the storm's happening, but in advance of the storm, make sure that you have a bag packed, including all your necessary medications that you might need. Make sure you have enough food, water and hygiene products in the house. Get those phones charged up. Make sure you're stocked up with batteries for flashlights, for your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors and for your battery powered radios, so you'll still have some communication to receive those messages that are referred to. Make sure that you have your vehicles fueled up. If you have a generator, make sure that you have enough fuel for that. And then similar to the, you know, won't you be my neighbor? Make sure that your family, your friends and your caretakers know your plans. So if you're, if you're planning on, on getting up and going to a regional shelter, the people that you have normal contact with should know that. If you're going to go to a friend's house, the people that you have normal contact with should know that. So when they do call to check on you and you don't answer your phone, they know, we, we know that, that there's no crisis that you're dealing with. So just letting, letting the people know that, that you have immediate contact with, let them know what your plans are when the storm's coming. So that way we're not, we're not calling around to shelters and trying to track you down. We will track you down, but it just makes everybody's life a lot easier if, if, if you just share your plans with somebody in advance. And next slide. And that concludes it. Sure, there's going to be some questions, so. We're ready.
Hey, thank you, Justin. And Casey, it was comprehensive and it was just outstanding. I'm sure we're going to have some comments or questions. Let me start with the board. I'll see if they say any hands up. I'll just make a comment. I've seen you, Justin's all over town. Before he came to deputy fire chief and Casey also in in other areas, I I have been in, I've lived in a number of areas and I've been impressed with what goes on in this town. It's just unbelievable. Let me start with Dean and then Jeff and Shereen.
Thank you, Peter, Casey and Justin. I'm really very impressed with the presentation and I feel very comforted as a citizen of the town by the extremely comprehensive program that you have. I don't have any particular question other than with with respect to the portable generator at at the community center. Is that currently operational? I know, I guess it's not on the platform yet. Is that what's what's this, the operating status of that? I guess this goes to John.
I can answer that. That's easy. It is operational. Dean, it is operational and it is on the platform and it is there. One of the things that, as indicated Gary from DPW, he did, he put down a T base, which is basically recycled asphalt, so we didn't have to worry about, you know, putting down that sort of pad. And we moved it over to that position. It's always been operational. We just did not put it over there, but it was easy enough to get over there. And, you know, to time, it didn't take long if we it needed to be activated and over there. One of the things that we were able to do, long answer to your short question, one thing that we were able to do with some of the monies that we had in the past when we had the generator projects is we knew that we were eventually going to put a generator into the community center from a permanent status. We were able to put a storm switch, which is a transfer switch in there, which would make it basically enable us just to, if in fact, we the regular generator, large generator went out, we could just plug in a temporary through that no matter what, anytime. So it's already that's in place, but the to answer your question, yes, the portable generator that is over there is operational, is operating.
So if we had a storm tonight?
Yes.
That's able to be activated immediately.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing what others have to say, including members of the public, but a very commendable presentation and I I think a very reassuring presentation from from all of you and your departments. Thanks and police department and the others as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Jeffrey?
Yeah, thank you, Peter, and and thank you, everybody that presented. I thought it was excellent as well, and I echo selectman Castro's comments, comprehensive. I do have, I do have two questions and a comment now. Maybe I missed it, but are do we have plans to make that generator a permanent generator? Did I miss that or or was that was that part of the presentation as well? I I didn't quite understand.
Justin, I'll answer that one too. Yes, we do. One of the things that was passed back in May was a hundred thousand dollars towards a portable. Or is a, excuse me, permanent generator. My apologies, I said portable, permanent generator. Yes, we do. What we've done is we developed a scope of work that's looking at putting a permanent generator there. The one thing that we just was able to do and Stuart did this, Stuart Smith, he had a local vendor run a load test so that we were buying, in fact, the right size generator for the building, because one of the things that we were receiving, to tell you the truth, was we were receiving conflicting information, the size we needed. And we didn't want to spend extra monies on something that was basically not needed. So we wanted to get a definitive answer, what was the proper size that will run a hundred percent of that building? So we are currently, scope of work is completed, other than putting together the size of it, looked at potential bids for it, and all we're waiting on is the load test and then we can go further into that. The inventory is going to be where we may have some challenges. However, I I would tell you that it, you know, based on stocks and we're seeing this with everything, however, the generator that's there already is assurance, it's already runs and it works. So.
Yeah, and if we did have an emergency tonight, just a stupid follow up here, but do we get informed that the PCS is open via reverse nine one one? Is that how we're informed or?
Yes, so so long as that determination was made, you know, that that would typically be made by by the emergency management director, who would be fire chief in town leadership, if the determination was made to make to open personal care site and we had that information, we would push it out certainly through the reverse now among.
Thanks. It was a great job, you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff, Shereen.
Thanks, thanks, Peter. Casey, it's been a little bit while since I've talked with you, but last year we spent a lot of, once a week doing the emergency operations center during the COVID height of the COVID and the collaboration work that I I I just, I'm not sure I could reiterate it as well as 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 I should during the during the time to the board as a chair. But the collaboration that the community had in that, the weekly meetings and the breakdown of what services were available for our town citizens during that time where it was comprehensive and really, I I think very, I I think it was an experience that probably helped create more of a substantive program for for the town. COVID being one thing, obviously storms and and, you know, severe weather events are entirely different. But I I really was impressed by seeing the overall picture of where everything lands on a county level and the local level and I I I I really appreciated hearing it tonight on the broader picture, even being so involved with it last year. I mean, I could, you know, step back and look at it, and I think this is what the public needed to to hear tonight. The idea that the the PCS, is that what I'm saying right, the Personal Care Center is available and is coordinated through a a system of of, you know, through the emergency director. And then it's available and that there is transportation available to go to a regional facility for any overnight ne- necessary overnight stays is is key, I think, to to the community. Are there any towns that you're aware of that don't use the regional system of shelters and have their own personal shelters? Like the lowest, is it Louis? Do they, are any of the towns implementing that, that program?
One of, a couple of the towns, Province Town in Truro, one of the things that's unique about Province Town in Truro is just as Justin hit on earlier, was be a good neighbor. And they're the ones, they don't, they haven't initiated the lowest and because of their their relative, their distance to the shelter, the regional shelter that's in Eastham, they, in a lot of times, what they do is they're really pushing the be, you know, help thy neighbor and and work with the neighbor. They're also doing it from the standpoint of, you know, when I talk with Chip Riley from Barnstable, because we have a lot of conversations in reference to it. A lot of them are concerned, unfortunately concerned about the pandemic and it's a lot easier them knowing who their neighbor is and going there, because when you go to your shelter, plain and simple, you you know, you're amongst the community and whomever. So there's a lot of unvariables with that. So to answer your question, those are the only two towns that that I'm aware of. Everybody else seems to be utilizing the regional shelters on, within Barnstable County.
Okay, I think it's reassuring to know and for the public to know that we this town has a, you know, a comprehensive, we have outreach, communications. We have, we have a comprehensive plan in place. We are staffed through volunteers and through the town's employees. And we have infrastructure here for to deal with this and we have a very experienced crew doing, working our emergency operations. So I want to say thank you, Casey, and thank you, Justin, for the for the really informative presentation tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Shereen. I'll echo that. Justin, I just have a question. We we are a senior community, you know, and and the outreach programs you have, but between the ones you mentioned with the police department as far and and having the individuals call in daily and then the other program, which was more of checking up on them, making sure that they're okay. I don't, you know, is is that a large group of people? And I don't know how to define large. I mean, is it, I know that when you have emergencies and you go out and and somebody's going out and, you know, as far as our our emergency services, you can get backed up and you use fire trucks to get in, I don't know personally, to get to somewhere. When it comes to this this group, how how is that handled, you know, as far as how large a group it is or whatever? I'm trying to put a
Yeah, you know, I I saw I saw Deputy Chief Anderson's hand go flying up. And he probably, he he's probably raising his hand to give you the exact number. But it is a, it is a fairly sizable group that 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 group tracks.
Deputy Chief, sure. Hi, Mike.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. Again, a great presentation, you guys. Right now, the reassurance program, because it's the middle of winter, we have about fifty four people on that list. We have a lot of snowbirds that go south for the winter, so that number increases in the springtime, summertime and fall. The special assistance list right now has twenty eight people on that. But half of those people on that special assistance list are also on the reassurance list. And that, again, that reassurance list, they call us every morning. If we don't hear from them, we go looking for them.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Let me, let me see if anyone from the public has any questions or comments. Give it a minute. Elaine?
Okay. Yes, thank you. And I thought it was a great presentation. Can you hear? Yes, my mic's on. Great presentation. I guess, I think what I'm hearing is that the board is in agreement to use the community center as a personal care center. And that people can either drive there on their own only because their house is thirty degrees and they can't see where a foot in front of them because they have no light or transportation would be provided. Because I do want to point out, because it's happened in the past, where regional shelters did not open because our storms were more local or they didn't have staffing. So I would hope that the, we are in agreement that that is the optimum solution is to have the community center open so that people can come in, get warm for a couple hours until dawn. Because I think the alternative is very dangerous, that they are in their homes. And those numbers are great that people have signed up, but I think there's many, many people out there who don't know that they can sign up and get reverse smart nine one one. And I think that's really important for us to keep hammering that home, that they will not be getting robocalls if they're not on the list. So I hope before, as we leave tonight, that we do have a commitment that the community center will be an alternative for people without power, so that they can come in for a few hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Casey or?
Could I, Ann Thompson is here with me and she has something to say. Is that all right?
Yeah, hang on a second, Ann. No, no, just Casey, do you, do you want to answer that first or do you want to just, I'll wait for the next person?
Whatever you prefer. I can do either or.
Okay, let me, let me have Ann go ahead. Go ahead, Ann.
Hi, just very quickly, I was curious to know what kind of permanent generator is going to go in at the community center? Do you know what make? And who would be installing it? And whether it would have transfer module boxes so that the power would go on slowly, which is a much better way for a generator to function in a very large municipal building? I wondered if some of those questions could be answered.
Thank you.
Casey? I can definitely take that one on. And and ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't receive your last name, but thank you for asking that question. It's a good question. I cannot answer and tell you the specific name brand. I can't do that. And, you know, there's been conversation, whether it's diesel, whether it's natural gas type and you know, talking with our engineers, you know, there's mixed on both sides. But I can tell you this, this is what I can tell you. I'm investigating both solutions and what's going to be best. The other challenge we faced is with this is the fact that we have a budget and trying to fit within that budget and getting what we can with that budget might be, it's a, you know, it's something for consideration. I'm not going to say it's going to be the major determination as a result, but it's something we're going to need to take into consideration when we're looking at it, because reality is we want to be good stewards to the public and at the same time, we want to make sure that the the building is a hundred percent functional and and basically we don't miss a beat when we lose power and that building swaps over. We want to be able to make sure that it it meets. There's pros and cons to go into either diesel and natural gas. So I I've heard, you know, our staff talk about it and there's pros and there's cons to both of them, so. But I can't tell you the exact name brand. I can't tell you much, you know, what it's going to be. Yes. The way we have to contract it and Alex can always talk much more about the contracting, but I'll give you just a quick overview, we're going to have to bid that out because of the amount of it. And we're going to have to look at the bids and make sure that there's a scope of work, which we developed and that they meet a hundred percent of that scope of work when it comes down to putting it in. So ma'am, I hope that answered that question. I'll I'll stop there, make sure I answered your questions and then Mrs. Gibbs, I'll follow on and answer your questions. How's that?
I think that's a yes.
Information. I certainly would highly recommend Kohler over Generac because the the product has become better than the Generac. And also the the module transfer boxes, which powers up slowly a large building, plus very often, all kinds of appliances and equipment can be affected by a surge when the power goes back on. But if you have the module boxes, that is not likely to happen. The only other question or worry that I have is please figure out a way to advertise maybe in the Chronicle and get more cert people, because I think there are a lot of people in town that probably would love to have a project like that. And maybe if there were more, then they could become they could basically be in charge of an area in Chatham. It's kind of what happened after the Second World War. Towns would break up their areas and then they'd have people who kept an eye on one area or another area. In other words, they'd be assigned a locale, which is kind of like your neighborhood plan. But if they were cert trained, that would be even better. They would be well equipped to knock on the doors and and to know what questions to ask. Thank you very much. Here's here's Elaine.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So Mr. Char, Casey, do you want to talk about how a personal care center is activated and depending on the type of event? I just don't want people showing up there automatically. So that's our role of having, you know, communications and making sure they're very clear. And it all depends on the event. The community center will be open if it has power, but I just wanted you to talk about the activation of it.
Absolutely. And Justin hit a little bit upon that. Thanks, Jill. Great, great question and great lead in. So as as Justin indicated a little bit earlier, one of the things and this this is it's going to be a little detailed and I'll go a little into process. One of the things, anytime we have storms that are creeping up the coast or whatever the case may be, there are calls days in advance and I'm part of calls twice a day with Barnstable County. And it's weather calls, what they discuss is we'll go through a weather roll, we'll get updated on the weather. We'll get updated on all the entities of things that are happening within Barnstable County. The jail, sheltering, the regional sheltering, they'll let us know. They'll let us know what's being activated, whatever the case may be of everything associated with the county. These calls normally last about and and I know a few of you maybe have been part of it. These calls last almost an hour long and they're twice a day to give us an update on everything. And there's over a hundred people throughout the county, whether it's all the towns, different municipalities, everything associated with it, you know, you name it, even American Red Cross. So that happens twice a day. From that, a determination is made by our leadership team, what steps are necessary? What steps are necessary? What steps are necessary by, you know, basically preparing and being prepared for whatever the case may be? At that point, the team leadership is making a decision whether that needs to be, the PCS needs to be made, you know, readied and made open. So that's really how that comes about and what the case may be. Justin talked about the communication piece. And Elaine, this is something that you talked to me a little bit earlier about. And I'll tell you, and I don't, I don't mind going on the record and say, I kind of missed a spot on the communication piece. And one of the things that we've talked about is that transparency and coming out ahead of time and letting people know that it's available needs to get out there, that the PCS is open and what the case may be. We can't just assume. That information needs to get out there. So, you know, through our 911, reverse 911, our rave system is getting that information out there. A lot of times, people don't like to use it, but that's what it's there for. And that, that information needs to get out ahead of time. So Jill, I think I answered that question. Is there pieces of that I missed that you think I should reiterate about or bring up, Jill?
No, we're all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Casey. I see Dean has his hand up also.
Yes, thank you, Peter. Just had a question for Justin and then a comment or seek some clarification. Justin, on the fire, the fire department lockbox program, how many have signed up for that? Do you know offhand or roughly?
I'm sorry, Dean, I don't, I don't have the number offhand, but I do know it's well over 2,000. Throw it down. Yep, yep. The coding on that key doesn't change. So we have, we have lockboxes that are still functional from 20 years ago. So, you know, we, we install on average, probably anywhere from, from two to five a week. So.
Wasn't aware of that.
Yes, and the message has really gotten out there and it's great. Even, I'm sorry.
Anybody can sign up for it.
Anybody can sign up for it. Yeah, there is a cost associated with it. Like I said, they're $61 and that just, that just pays, that just, it's just, it's just a money transfer to pay for the actual box. But we just, it's pretty simple. The firefighters, you just call up that day. We have plenty in stock here at the station. You just call up. As long as you have a spare key for your house, they'll come right over and they'll install it on your house. And then we keep a database of that, a record. So we, as the crew is getting dispatched to the house, they can tell them actually where it's located on the, on the house.
And it's just the fire department has access to that?
Yep, yep. It's coded specifically to our town and only the fire department has those keys.
And available to young and old alike?
Yep.
Okay. The other question for clarification, because when Elaine was speaking a few moments ago, she, she talked about the availability of the personal care center overnight. Now, from what I heard you say earlier, the center in your charts, the center closes at 9:30. And for those that need, that can't go back to their houses, that need to go somewhere else, it's either to be transported to the regional center or transportation is arranged. Or if the regional center isn't open, you would have to have some arrangement with a local lodging establishment, I guess, via some MOU. Did I understand that correctly? I guess that's for John.
Yes, Dean, and yes, Mrs. Gibbs was exactly correct. When we talked about the PCS currently, and I gave you a snapshot, as of today, as of today, if this was to occur today, the PCS is basically open until our hours of operation and not overnight. However, overnight, in the event if someone needed charging, those sort of things, the two municipal buildings that are open overnight happen to be the police and fire, which happen to have access to their lobbies. But that is as of now. You're correct in assuming in your, your comment there about transportation. Transportation would be provided if the person elected or residents elected to go to the regional, regional shelter, yes. Transportation can be provided there or back to their residents or, you know, as indicated, if they wanted to go to the lobby of those two places. That's what's in place as of right now.
Okay, thank you.
So you're absolutely correct. So thank you.
Okay, I have Elaine is up and then Justin. Well, let me ask this question first. Justin, are you going to respond to what Casey just said or is it something else?
Yeah, just to piggyback on what.
Okay, you go first and then I'll go through Elaine.
Okay, just to piggyback on that. We had at the last, the last storm, you know, one thing we're always doing in emergency, emergency management planning is we're constantly looking at trends and historical data to determine what our future needs are. The last winter storm in, or I guess, yeah, winter, October, the last storm we had, we had 40 plus people that, that utilized the personal, personal care site during the daytime hours. The Barnstable County Regional Shelter that opened, there was one shelter open for the county and it had one citizen show up for that. So, you know, we are constantly looking at, at data and trends and what the needs of the community are and adjusting our, our practices and policies based on that.
Okay, thank you, Justin Elaine.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused now. Obviously, because the community center is open until nine o'clock, people can go in there because it's open and the lights are on. What I've been asking is the ability to open it up past nine o'clock. Because sometimes regional shelters aren't open and people don't want to go down there and have to pack bags. They just need a few hours at two o'clock in the morning with their little kids or when their house is 30 degrees to be able to go there. And that's what I've been asking. And I, I, I thought that's where we were headed, that that was what you were going to do, that a personal care center would be open after the normal business hours for people to get warm in the height of a storm when they had no power and it was 20 degrees in their house. Am I wrong? I thought that's where we were going with this. That was my original request. Because the community center is open, otherwise the generator is working and those are the hours. So I, I would hope that we would supply a place for people to go when it is potentially a matter of life or death, when they are in their homes and it's super, super cold and it has been, and there's no indication, they can't communicate with anyone, but they can get in their car and drive over to the community center. And you guys can announce it ahead of time. Hopefully, if you know the storm's coming and we're going to lose power.
Okay, Justin.
Yeah, I'll just offer a response to that. You know, one of the things that Casey had touched on was, was staffing and the considerations that are given towards staffing the personal care site. And, and that becomes one of the biggest considerations of, of, of when to open it, why to open it and how long to keep it open. First and foremost, you know, town staff will be utilized. As indicated in Casey's slides earlier, they're really restricted to, to their, their regularly assigned working hours. Second, secondary to that, you know, we, we reach out to our CERT volunteers and hopefully we can get some of them available. But again, just to, just to go back to the previous slides, as, as, as the incident expands and as more regional shelters and additional local personal care sites open up, the obligations of that CERT team are to the other towns that, that they serve. So those volunteers, Casey mentioned, there's about 40 that are, that are fair, pretty active. They start getting spread pretty thin. So it, you know, we can't, can't state it enough, you know, we, we're, we need more volunteers. We need people to come out and offer some, some really brief training on, on how to staff it. That building, it can't just be left open with, with no, nobody to staff it.
Casey, no? Or Elaine, still, your hand's still up, Elaine, or is it?
Uh, no, I, I will lower it because I don't think I'm getting anywhere here. I can't believe we can't find one or two people out of a group of, whether it's the fire department, the police department, council on aging employees, CERT, to get one or two people to just sit there. I mean, it's not like there's going to be a threat of robbery or anything. And if there's a medical emergency, you know, the CFD is right across the street. So I would hope we could do that because the alternative is grim. Having people in their homes in the dead of night in 20 degree weather. But I am becoming redundant. So I hope we can work on that and find a way to staff it. Whether we pay the employees to, to do that and get on a list that we can go through. And then you'll be able to notify the people that it's going to be open for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Anyone else? Anything else? I want to thank you guys. You, super job. Anything from the board? All right, Casey, Justin, thank you so much. It always sounds easy, but you've shown that what we have is, is a, we have a plan. And as Shereen mentioned, Shereen, go ahead. I'll let you.
Yeah, I just, I, I understand the frustration around what I'm hearing from Elaine a little bit. But I, but what I was, my takeaway from everything was the fact that there's a, a two, three, four prong emergency management response to, or a response to all the emergencies. The, the personal care, the, the shelter, the, the shelter and also the neighbor to neighbor outreach that, that can help. I'm seeing that there's more than just, you know, a, a plan, this one plan, that there are all, there's a bit more to the plan than just one alternative to somebody who needs to get warm. I'm not saying that, you know, there, there may be folks out there that don't have the resources or the neighbor contacts or whatever. But I, I know that, you know, we try to share our home if we have electricity and lights and a neighbor doesn't. Or we will go to somebody's house who has a generator and, you know, vice versa. So I think that, I think that the community itself has those shared resources in place. I can't imagine if there's a humongous catastrophe that we wouldn't be ramping up resources to help everybody. And I'm sure that you guys have that kind of plan in place if that was to happen here in the community. And that's all my comments are.
Thank you, Dean.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that in addition to what Shereen just said, that I would expect that the, the program that's in place now calls for continuous monitoring and improvement going forward. So that if the types of situations that Elaine was articulating, and I think they're legitimate questions, those, the, the frequency and the need for that would be attended to. And perhaps you, you would, you would expand your, your staffing and your utilization of the community center beyond the 9:30 hour in given circumstances. I, I understand the, the question that, that she's asked, the request that she's made. And I, I think, just hearing from what Justin said earlier, that, that you do track the numbers, that it's sort of implicit in the, in the, in the project that you're going to, that you are engaged in continuous self-improvement. Tell me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's what I would expect and hope you're doing.
Yeah, and Justin has his hand up. Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, you just kind of took the words right out of my mouth, Dean. We're constantly looking at process improvement and, you know, the, the situations are constantly changing just from, you know, an individual storm, the situation can be so dynamic and the, the situation can change in the blink of an eye. So as things change, we're, we're constantly adapting. These plans are adaptable. There, it's, it's, we have to have a plan on paper. Sometimes the plan doesn't work and we just need to adapt. So as, as resources become more available, things can change.
Thanks, Justin. Casey?
Thanks. And I'm going to hit on something that Shereen and Dean just hit on as well as Justin. And, and one of the things, of course, anytime you start doing emergency management, you're looking at risk management. You're doing a lot of risk management and you're basically second guessing yourself. And you're doing complete mitigation. And what you're doing is you're looking at things that work, that didn't work, and taking advantage of, I like to use the term history. What has worked? What have we done in the past? Will it work? I don't like to say that just because we did it in the past, it's going to work. I don't like using that terminology because I don't think that's fair. Because one of the things that we're keeping proven upon is technology. I talked about technology a little bit earlier, where we've got the sky, we've got the land, we've got the water, but we don't have underwater. So, you know, let's advance technology. But one of the things with redundancy, and we start talking about sheltering, communications and sheltering is fantastic when you start looking at redundancies. We do have those separate layers. And yes, should we look at them? We, we're always going to do that and take that into account. One of the things that's very unique, and I brought this up a little bit. We recognize the fact, back in August, we did a tabletop exercise. What is a tabletop exercise? It's a tabletop exercise, you invite everybody to the, to the table, basically into the community, into a situation, and you throw out some scenarios and you walk through it. And everybody discusses it, how to do it, and you put out scenarios. We had facilitators that walked through it. I didn't facilitate it purposely. And I, I went through and made sure that things were there, you know, I set it up and everything. But we were able to learn from that. And as I talked about this, and one of the things that came from that was the PCS, was developed that and we, we went through that. Now, I will tell you this, that Barnstable County was part of that. And Barnstable County is even looking at PCSs for a lot of the other towns. Because right now, I don't know of another town that has a PCS. I don't know. I might be wrong. There might be towns within our county that have it, but I don't know that. That I don't know. But I can tell you this, that is the way that Barnstable County is trying to push most of the towns to go. So that is just a comment that I just wanted to bring up. So it kind of, I just piggyback on the three, on, you know, three folks that just brought up things and how we continuously look to for improvement.
Okay, thank you. And Justin, your hands up again.
Sorry, I'll just leave you with one last thing. I don't want to belabor it and I hope everybody probably wants to move on. But Mrs. Gibbs, I just did want to say, you know, we do hear you. We understand your position and where you're coming from. And I will just say anecdotally, we, you know, we have a super dedicated group here at the fire station, a super dedicated group at the police station. And I've, I've personally witnessed on a number of occasions them go way above and beyond the call of duty to make sure that people are taken care of. You know, nobody will be left cold. We, it's, no matter what, no matter how busy we are, we'll find a way to make sure that people are taken care of and that their basic needs are met. We've, we've had, had residents in the past that when the shelters weren't open, we didn't leave there. We, we left somebody with them until we made sure we got them somewhere warm to go.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, that looks like it. So thank you very much. That was very informative, comprehensive and just outstanding. And I feel a lot better. Even though I used the emergency services at least just once, but they were outstanding. So thank you again and we'll move on.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holiday.
Thank you all.
Okay, next on the agenda is our Mass Clean Water Trust financing and it's Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, tonight before you, we have a request to approve borrowing through the Clean Water Trust, which is the state revolving fund. Again, these are for the wastewater issues that we have at 0% interest. So in your packet tonight, I've listed some of the details on the wastewater issues that we've had in the past. And just for the public's information, to date since 2009, the town has approved borrowing authorizations of 130, just over $137 million for wastewater in the town of Chatham. Important to note on that is that we've received grants through the USDA of almost $20 million. So we don't have to pay that back. That is quote unquote free money. And of those, I've listed the issuances so far through the Clean Water Trust, which so far to date has issued 30,600,000 in 0% interest loans. The loan that's before you tonight is, we've been approved under the Clean Water Trust Agreement 1947 for $27,500,450. And tonight, we're asking that you approve the first issuances of the interim loans under CW 1947 and 1947-A. And those amounts are $1,148,436 for the first note and $176,547 for the second note, of which the funds have already been expended. So these are reimbursable. of which the funds have already been expended, so these are reimbursable to the town right now. And that's pretty much in a nutshell. There's quite a large vote of the select board that needs to be voted. But according to bond counsel, you can just state that you have read the vote and it's before you and the motion for that. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Pretty quick and easy. You've seen these before.
Yeah, let's see. I see Dean and then Jill. Or Jill, but hang on a second. Dean, would you mind if I check with Jill first? If she's, you're going to add something to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Dean. So zero percent interest, which is great. And the suggested motion for someone to make would be, I moved that the board vote to approve the following vote of the select board as printed in the agenda report. And that will tie everything together to what Alex had just said.
Thank you, Jill. Dean?
Thank you, Jill. I was going to offer the motion. So I moved that the board vote to approve the following vote of the select board as printed in the material in the agenda packet and as president and director.
Thank you.
Second.
Any, any comments? Jeff, your hand is up. Is that?
That was from my second.
Got it. Any other comments? If not, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeffrey?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is to consider opting in, into a municipal opioid litigation settlement via the Mass Attorney General's office. And I'm back to Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, in your package tonight, we provided information on the national opioid settlement. In July, the Attorney General of Massachusetts, Maura Healy, had announced a resolution with the three opioid distributors and one opioid maker to have abatement funds come to the Commonwealth. So towns are opting into this sort of class action lawsuit or with other municipalities. So we've spoken to Attorney Pat Costello, Town Council, who said, you know, there's no harm in the town joining in on this lawsuit. The town is eligible to receive, I believe it's zero point one six nine of the percentage of the funds coming to the Commonwealth, and that would be fifteen percent of the total amount. I did provide some information from the Mass Municipal Association. I don't know if anyone looked up some of the information on it. But again, the Attorney General is encouraging towns to join into the lawsuit with no harm.
Okay, thank you. Dean?
Yeah, I, it looks to me, Alex, that if you multiply the Chatham percentage by the prospective recovery, we would get about ninety thousand dollars. I don't know if you've done that math, but that's, that's what I came up with.
Yeah, and again, there's, there's no guarantee of the amount that we would get, but we would be eligible that. And that would be to fund prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery efforts in Chatham.
Yeah. The, it, from the Attorney General's letter and the Mass Municipal Association material, it seems that the more, it does, it sounds counterintuitive, but the more towns that opt in, the more money we're likely to get. The question I had was, is, I guess to the town manager, Jill, do we, do we have any thought as to what our plan, as to what we would do with this money? Or how are we going to go, go about planning for the expenditure of these funds? Because they can only be used, unfortunately, they can't go into the general revenues. That would be nice, but, but do we have any thoughts as to what we might do with this money? Or how we might decide on that going forward?
Yeah, I, we do support a number of nonprofit agencies that help with addiction. So I think that what we would do is have a conversation with our neighboring communities as well as the Human Services Committee to talk about how to distribute that appropriation.
I think bringing the Human Services Committee into it would be a great idea. I, I certainly am very supportive. I know that, I see Pat Costello was on, on the call if he has anything to say. But that, those are my questions. Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, thanks, Dean. Pat, hand was up, but I don't see it now. Pat, you still on?
Good evening. Good evening, folks. How are you? Yes, this, this is an opt-in agreement. The bottom line is I see no reason why the town should not opt into this agreement because it's, it's only going to be to our advantage down the road, both in terms of the amount of funds that we will ultimately recover and the timing of the receipt of the funds. The, the way the settlement agreement, which was reached back in July of this year, was structured, is that both sides of the V, the plaintiffs as well as the defendants in the case, have stipulated to certain terms, but they each have the opportunity to opt out if there's not a clear mandate for participation amongst the multiple governmental units and subdivisions involved. So in other words, the Commonwealth's interest is best served by getting as many municipalities within the Commonwealth to opt into this agreement because that will assure the Commonwealth the seat at the table when the final settlement terms are, are hammered out. And it will likely encourage the defendants, the distributors and manufacturers and J and J, to agree to go forward with the settlement. So the amount of money, as Alex noted, that, that we will get is not cast in stone right now. The timing of, of the settlement, the timing of the Commonwealth's submission of evidence of opt-in by local subdivisions is going to be critical. And obviously, the reason why the more communities that opt in, the better for the defendants is because in exchange for our commitment to participate in the settlement agreement, we are, as a town, releasing any prospective claims we would have against these particular defendants. So the defendants want assurance that as many governmental subdivisions and states as possible have affirmatively opted in and released claims against them. Now, just for some, some purposes, this, this is only a settlement against these particular defendants. It's, it's the big three distributors so-called are AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal Health and McKesson. And then Johnson &amp; Johnson is a manufacturer, a former manufacturer. It no longer manufactures opioids. This particular settlement, which could yield up to twenty-six billion dollars for all of the participating governmental entities, only relates to those parties. There are other pending claims in the multi-district litigation that are ongoing. In fact, I, I do believe there are going, there was going to be trial in one of these cases in the first quarter of 2022 for an entity, against an entity, or entities which have not yet settled. So the amount of money we'll ultimately get is wholly undetermined at this point in time. We can only look at the twenty-three to twenty-six billion dollar total settlement sum at this point in time. It will be allocated between the Commonwealth and the participating municipalities within the Commonwealth. As, as has been previously stated, our percentage within the, the remediation fund that the Commonwealth has set up is point six one nine percent of, of whatever funds are available for distribution to municipalities. So at this juncture, we will get that percentage of whatever the total settlement funds are received and are specifically allocated to cities and towns.
Thank you, Pat. I see Shereen's hands up and then Jeffrey.
So Gina mentioned the, you know, where the funds should go. And I, I was going to say the same thing, human services. There are a number of agencies in, on the Cape, and there's a couple in Chatham that actually do do opioid outreach and narcotene training and, and whatnot. So I think it's really important that we tap into, you know, tap into our Human Services Committee to deal with this. I did look up on the Mass Department of Health to see if there were any opioid deaths, related deaths in Chatham. And sadly, we've had, there was reported in the statistics for Mass DPH that between 2015 and 2020, there were four opioid-related deaths in Chatham. So if somebody thinks it's not a reality for all the communities in Massachusetts, they're absolutely wrong. It's a reality for every community in Massachusetts. So I'm really supportive of signing on to this, uh, this, um, this action.
Thank you, Shereen. Jeff?
Yeah, as am I, big time. You know, this, I, I work for an organization that treats opioid addiction. It is extremely prevalent on the Cape. It's extremely distressing. And so I'm, I, I live this all the time. I see it all the time. So I think it's very important that, that we try to recruit some, some dollars that can go to, go to benefit those that treat these folks, whether it's prevention or remediation or curing or whatever. But it is a struggle for a lot of these folks. Sadly, we have lost four in Chatham, from Chatham. So I, I very much support this. And I would move opt into the settlements and to register the town of Chatham on the National Sentiment website, you know, heartily.
That's a motion.
That's a motion. Yep.
I second it, but I do notice that Mike Anderson might have something to say.
Yeah, and, and Dean had his hand up first. Dean?
Well, Mike go first.
Hi, Mike. Go ahead.
Thanks, members of the board. Just to expand on that, I did expect that this question would be asked. I did run the numbers for just this year and last year. This year, we've had six reported overdoses with one fatality. And last year, we had four with one fatality. So that's just in the past two years.
Thank you. Dean?
First, I wanted to just add an amendment to Jeff's motion that we authorize the town manager and/or other appropriate staff to sign whatever documents are necessary to participate. The, I just wanted to make a comment. A couple of years ago, this is on a parallel issue, but I think it's equally important, and that's alcoholism. A couple of years ago, there was a presentation by the state, I don't know, it was titled, he was the state rep from the, uh, ABCC, and Sean knows him. And he, I approached him, this was at the Cape and Islands Association meeting, and I approached him about his availability to give presentation to the select board. And I think I did make a request a few years ago, but we're so backed up on requests. But I, I would hope that at some point in the future, we could invite that individual to come and, and speak to the board and the public about the, the dangers of, and the risks of alcoholism on Cape Cod. Because as I recall, he said it was the number one problem, social problem on the Cape. You know, opioids is extremely important as well, but it just occurred to me to bring that up. At this point, the way there's a motion, there's an amendment to Jeff's motion, and I'll leave that to Jeff and Shereen to accept.
I'm fine with it.
Go ahead.
I'm fine with the amendment to the motion. I'm fine. And I have a quick, I had a quick question for, I don't, I, you know, I know they've been sued and settled, and now they're, they're opening up other lawsuits, et cetera. So I didn't know whether, and I think Maura Healy was involved in, in those lawsuits. The Commonwealth and Mass was involved as well, but, um, anyway, just wondering where that, if you had any idea where that, those lawsuits are, Pat, Purdue Pharma?
Yeah, I, I do believe, Jeff, as you've noted, that Purdue Pharma has reached a settlement with the litigants. And I believe that, I'm not sure what the sum is, but any amount of money that would have been recovered by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in that case would have been deposited into the opioid recovery and remediation fund. I believe there were approximately, there's approximately eleven million dollars in that fund right now. So that would have, that sum would have come from such settlements in other cases. And as I noted earlier, there will be more. There will be others.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you very much. Let's go on to the next agenda item, which is consider a date of the 2022 annual town meeting. We received a number of emails on that. Town manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, at the annual town meeting, there was a bylaw that was passed that would require the board to set a date for the next town meeting next following year by December 31st. And so as you know, our annual town meeting is set for the second Monday in May. And then we have our election three days later. With this, and as came to us through recommendations from Chatham 365, the board has the opportunity to determine another date in May. At this time, we ask the school department to look at a couple of dates, indoor dates at the gymnasium, and we're just waiting to hear back. And that was for Saturday, May 7th and May 14th. So the regular schedule for the annual town meeting for 2022 would be May 9th. And then Memorial Day, just so you know, is late next year, so that would be on Monday, May 30th. So I want to thank the moderator also for bringing this to our attention, that the impending deadline. And I see that he's on, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, anyone from the board? I'll make, go ahead, Dean.
Well, I was just going to ask, depending on where we are with respect to the pandemic, or I, I think it's moving toward an endemic, even if Dr. Fauci doesn't want to acknowledge that. But if we are going to have the need to have it outdoors, is that doable? Or need, would put, move it forward and even into June, assuming there's state law that's, that's enacted to it, authorize that? Is, are we flexible enough to be the vote we take tonight?
We were this year, and so that was under, we're still under the COVID state of emergency as it relates to the open meeting law. So I don't know what status we'll be in. So tonight's motion might have a main motion and a, a main date selected in a couple of contingencies just because we have to set the date, if you want to change the date tonight. So I don't know. I mean, there's always, we could always go outdoors, I believe, but that will not, hopefully not be under the, the COVID emergency order that we have in and that we're currently operating under. So I guess the answer is, it's just to be determined.
Okay. Well, I'm okay with either date. Perhaps we ought to take the ninth, just in case something happens. But I'm, I'm okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so am I. Jeff has his hand up and then Shereen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely okay with the Saturday. I, I think the Chatham 365 suggested it. And I think, you know, having it even early in the afternoon is a good idea. I just think it's a good idea. And I think it's certainly worthy of trying. And I'm comfortable with either the seventh or the ninth or whatever day we come up with in May in either indoor or outdoor. If we need to be outdoors, then we'll be outdoors if the pandemic so dictates. But I'm, I'm, I'm good with the Saturday. I think it's, I want to try it. Thanks.
Yeah, with a grace. Shereen?
So I'm, I'm fine with the Saturday. I think the afternoon would be ideal. People can do the, the sports. They can, you know, go do errands, whatever. Jill, why wasn't the 21st considered? Was there a reason why you didn't ask the school to look at the 21st?
I, we can. I think we were just looking at, within that two-week window when we normally have the annual town meeting, just in case people do make plans. But we could certainly ask for the, the 21st too.
The reason why I say that is Mother's Day is the eighth. So if we were considering what the second day of the town meeting would be, and we were going to consider the next Sunday afternoon, I'd prefer that it wouldn't be a Mother's Day, which is May 8th this year. And I do know that graduation for Montomoy Regional is Memorial Day weekend too. So it, it looks like we have, we have options. So whether it's indoors or outdoors or however, I think it, I, I believe the, I was, I believe that last town meeting, there was sort of a straw poll taken by the moderator with the group to see if they were interested in the Saturday. And it looked like people were in favor of that. So I, I'd like to move forward to explore which date that should be. So, yeah.
So we have, we have to have a date. Vote on a date today or, or options for a date. Is that correct, Jill?
Yes, and I was just reviewing the bylaw to make sure. Yeah, so we're going to establish another date within the month of May and could then be at the meeting adjourned from time to time until the disposition of all the articles. So I was hoping to have suggested dates, but that we don't have. We, we don't have confirmation from the school department that, so if there's a, kind of, it'd be an interesting motion for you to make. So maybe preference, you know, number one, number two, if not, number one's not available, and maybe get... If not, number one's not available. And maybe give me top threes. And we can figure out how to make sure that we're compliant with the bylaw for you selecting the date.
Okay, Shereen, hands up. Did I interrupt you? I'm sorry if
No, but I'll make that motion. Let me see if I can do this. I move that the 2022 annual town meeting be scheduled for for one of three options with optional dates, one being on May 14, number two being May 21, number three being May 7.
I have a second?
I'll second it. But, Mr. Chairman, I could we ask Town Council if that's going to comply with the bylaw? I suspect it does, but.
There, yeah. Yeah, good. Pat?
Figured I'd hang around for this topic. I would recommend that the board vote to pick a date certain and then condition the vote with a contingency that the following dates shall be declared fallback dates in the event there is a change. So you have a primary date, then you're going to have two contingency dates that the board can subsequently vote to select over the primary date.
So let me try again. I move that the 2022 annual town meeting be scheduled on May 14 with a contingency if if there is a reason to change for May 21 or May 7.
I think that's that's good.
Okay.
Jeff's hands up?
Yeah, I was just going to say with the town elections on the Thursday following. I mean, if we got to think about that as well. So I don't know if we want to include that in the motion. I just want to be aware that we've got town elections to follow on the Thursday.
That would be automatic, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we have a trigger in our bylaw for the elections to occur so many days following the annual town meeting.
Super.
Okay, so I second from Dean. All right, any more discussion? Let's take a vote. I'll go start with Dean.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, before you move on, we haven't established a time. So so that's one thing we need to do. So I don't know if you're thinking of 1:00 PM.
Do we have to take another vote on that or just?
I think so.
Mr. Chair, I move that the time set for the annual town meeting date specific to the last motion be established at 1:00 PM.
Second.
We have a second.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Start with Shereen.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Anything else?
I'll say. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I think that was a good move personally. All right. At our last last agenda item, annual business license, we have four areas to consider. And I believe we may have some changes to what's in their staff report. Shauna or yeah, Shauna?
Shauna.
Sure. Yes, on the first for Class 2 auto sales, moving from the conditional to the unconditional renewal would be Christopher Wentworth Auto Sales and Clark's Auto Services, Inc.
Okay, that's it?
That's the only one for auto sales. Yes.
Okay. Well, do we can we take these all together or we have to do each one individually?
They're different.
Yeah. So we need a motion on
So sorry, traditionally, they're taken up separately.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
Separately? For all auto sales separately?
I thought
The motion is consolidated. Mr. Chair, I am moved to approve that 2021 2021 renewal of the Class 1, 2, and 3 auto licenses is recommended by the licensing agent and updated this evening.
Yeah, definitely. Have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? We have to, as 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 we had two changes that were made, you have to consider that in a motion?
I think I incorporated.
Okay. Sorry, I missed it. Yeah, all right. Let's take a let's take a vote. I'm getting ready to leave. Dean?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. That finishes our business for tonight.
We got junk. We got alcohol.
Oh, yes. Darn it.
Mr. Chair, there were no changes to the inkeepers or lodging house licenses from the agenda report.
Okay. You have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve that 2022. The last motion was 2021. Should we have to amend that, Shauna? I read it as it was printed. It said 2021.
I thought that, yeah.
Because we make an editorial correction to the motion we've just voted on for the
Very good point.
So I I think you I think the license, I think the secretary or the clerk of our board can make that editorial unless challenged. So, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the 2022 renewals of inkeeper and lodging house licenses as recommended by the licensing agent.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Another one.
Mr. Chair, on the entertainment, automatic amusement, and movie theater renewals, there were no updates from the agenda report.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the 2022 renewals of automatic amusement, entertainment, and movie theater licenses is recommended by the licensing agent.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Seeing none, let's start with Jeff.
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Move on to the last one, which has to do with common victualers Sunday dessert renewals.
And on the common victualers and Sunday dessert licenses, there were some moved from the conditional to unconditional approval, those being Cape Ventures, Inc., DBA, Emac, and Bolio's Ice Cream, The Corner Store, Dent Donuts, LLC, DBA Dunkin' Donuts, and Monomoy Coffee Company is not seeking a renewal.
Okay.
I move to approve the 2022 renewals of common victular Sunday dessert licenses as recommended by the licensing agent and as updated this evening.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none. Let's start with Dean.
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Now we're finished.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn our meeting tonight.
Second.
You have a second?
Second.
No, I'm just getting ready. Get a festive vote tonight. Before we leave, but I would do would like to say something, though. You know, I mean, this is this is a wonderful season, a joyous season. We celebrate with family and friends, and I just wish everyone a Happy New Year and a joyous season and a Merry Christmas. And then we'll take our vote. All right, Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yeah, Merry Christmas, everyone. Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. Jill, it's been a great meeting. And we'll see you at the first meeting of the new year, 2022.
See you next year.
See you next year.